Yeah. Oh, 'cause I remember when Ryan.
I've been.
Bug.
Fixes this problem.
Echo?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, I don't have the keys.
Oh, I had a wonderful Monday's day. Thank you for asking.
Two is. Right, and then. That, the one, the one I just wrote. I want that.
That's good. Yeah, yeah, how about you? Oh, hi, Martin.
Yeah? Did you try?
Yeah, it's good. Yeah, it's a good try.
Thanks, Mom.
All right, I'll go ahead and call this meeting of the Planning Commission for May 13th to order. First order business roll call.
Thank you. Chair Wilson.
Here.
Chair, Vice Chair Kerth.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Porter. Commissioner Do.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Huber and Commissioner Do. Would you please stand?
Heavenly Father, help us to do our very best this day, not by worrying about whether we are right, but by doing the right thing. May we understand that the roots of happiness grow deepest in the soil of service. Amen.
All right. Can we get any approval of minutes for our April 8, 2015 meeting?
So moved.
Second. Call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Those minutes were passed, thank you.
All right. Let's go ahead and open Agenda Item Number One.
Thank you, Chair. Item number one is Case PLN 15-00010. It is a conditional use permit modification to allow for the expansion of an automobile dealership and a site plan with an environmental exemption to allow for the construction of a new parking lot. This is located on the southwest corner of Valley Center Drive and La Paz Drive. The applicant's requesting this three-acre parking lot expansion to accommodate an expansion to an existing auto dealership that's currently vacant. It was previously occupied by the Mitsubishi dealership. The applicant intends to use it as an interim location for Victorville Toyota Scion and also the permanent location for, the new permanent location for Valley High Kia. The proposal meets all conditions and, the proposal meets all municipal code requirements as conditioned, and staff recommends approval as is.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on Agenda Item Number One. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this item? Okay, now I'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the commission.
Chairman Wilson, I'll find the project category exempt. Adopt Resolution P-15-021 approving the site plan portion of the case number PLN 15-00010, subject to the attached conditions of approval. And approving, modifying the revised condition number 20. And adopt resolution number P-15-022 approving the conditional use permit portion of case number PLN 15-00010, subject to the attached conditions of approval.
I'll second that. We have a first by Commissioner Huber, a second by Commissioner Porter. Call for the vote. Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Project has passed.
Go ahead and move on to Agenda Item Number Two.
Chairman Wilson, as I had in the past on this agenda item, I'm going to request to recuse due to a business conflict of interest.
Yes, Chairman, Commissioners, Agenda Item Number Two is a site plan to allow for the construction of two fast food restaurants and one multi-tenant retail building with an environmental exemption. And it's located adjacent to the Crossroads Shopping Center at 395 and Palmdale Roads. On this item was continued from the April Commission meeting to allow time for staff to address the issues from Walmart. Staff has addressed those issues in the memo you received tonight, or received last week, I should say. And therefore recommends approval with all added and modified conditions, and that includes the added and modified conditions from all previous memos. Although Walmart did submit another last-minute letter today, the letter does contain or reiterates the same issues as before, which staff has addressed. And if there are any questions, staff is available to answer them.
I'll go ahead and open up public hearing now. I have two cards relating to this item. If there's any one additional besides these two that wish to speak, please fill out a white card and give it to the clerk. First up would be Mark Ostrich.
Good evening, Mark Ostrich, 550 East Hospitality Lane, San Bernardino. And I'm here on behalf of Walmart. I, I'm thinking the other speaker is the applicant's representative, perhaps he should speak first. Whatever your pleasure is, but.
Uh, that's fine if you don't mind. I have no problem with that.
Okay.
So we'll go to Fur Mark and we'll go to Dan Osren.
Hi, my name is Dan Osren and I live in Irvine at 15 West Morland. And I'm with Cotty Foods and I just wanted to present our project and I wanted to thank staff who's been a pleasure to work with during the duration of the project and the board. I think staff presented our project correctly. You know, we've seen today's report and it is, in fact, a reiteration of their concerns from April. In the time period since April, we've developed a traffic study, which the city has reviewed and, and approved and it has clarified the adequacy of our project in terms of parking. And it has also was, partly, the goal of the traffic report was to support the city code as well, because that was being questioned in these letters from, from Walmart, both in April and from today. So, we did the study and, and the city traffic division has reviewed it and concurs that the project is, meets satisfactory parking requirements. If there's any questions for me, I'd like to answer them. But we appreciate approval and we're ready to move forward and I think we've worked very hard and staff has worked very well with us and, you know, we've, we feel we're in a good place.
Thank you. Mark?
Thank you. Again, Mark Ostrich, 550 East Hospitality Lane, San Bernardino. And I'm here this evening on behalf of Walmart. And I just have a few remarks. I did submit a letter today. Apologize that it wasn't submitted earlier, but when I left on the eighth, I believe that Cotty was going to engage in some informal conversations with us about our concerns. And I've been unable to have that meeting with them. They have not been available for a meeting and I, it appears to me that they, they feel that they've done what they're going to do and they're not really interested in discussing our concerns with us. So, I had hoped to have that meeting and to bring a resolution to you this evening, but that has not been possible, not due to our lack of trying. But I did want to make a few remarks tonight to, to try to focus you on what our area of concern is. We're not trying to be a bully. We're not trying to prevent this adjacent development from developing and operating. We appreciate adjacent retail operations because of the synergy they create with our store. And in fact, part of our project, although this site isn't really within our project, it's not subject to our CCNRs. Within our project are a number of retail developments that, that we welcome. And within those developments, there are, at this time, at least one other fast food operator and other retail uses, which we welcome. But the difference between this project and our project, our projects, is that our other retail projects are integrated within our shopping center. Our internal roadways are designed to serve the Walmart store and to serve these other developments. The other restaurant developments on Palmdale Road.
When you're, when you're ready for, you want yours, okay, they're not in any particular order, but.
Just flash them up and we'll go to the.
Go ahead, IT.
That I want to refer to.
That you?
Keep going.
Okay, next slide, or next picture.
Sorry.
We weren't able to get these in a slideshow due to the. Timing, so. Jer, there we go.
So they're not on the Planning Commission's screens?
Yeah, Jeremy, could you push those to the Commissioner's screens too, please?
We can stop with that one. That wasn't my primary, but we can talk about that one for a moment when, when it's on the Commissioner's screens.
There we go.
Okay, that, that is one of the retail, restaurant-oriented developments within our center on Palmdale Road. So that's Palmdale Road at the bottom of the, of the slide. There's a McDonald's fast food restaurant on the, my left side of the slide. And on the right side is an inline building where there's a Domino's Pizza, so there's a food use. And staff is correct that that food use is parked at less than one car per thousand square feet of, of space. But the difference between these sites and the Cotty Food Site is that you'll notice at the top of the picture, our ring road is contiguous to both of those sites. You'll notice that there's free access into that inline building at three different points along our ring road. And there's only one building on that site. The fast food site is on a separate legal parcel. It's physically separated. The users of the McDonald's site traverse the ring road, enter the McDonald's site, and exit the McDonald's site. There's two points of access there. They don't cross, traverse our site. They enter the McDonald's site, buy their food, they leave. The drive-through on the McDonald's site actually wraps around the store so that there's not conflict with the parking spaces. So, that's, that's the type of food use that we welcome in the center. Our concerns about the Cotty site, it's not that we don't want more of that type of development, we do. But our concerns about the Cotty site really are a combination of things. We can isolate the parking problem. We think the site's too dense with buildings and is not adequately parked despite the fact that it technically complies with your parking code. But the real problem is when you look at the density of the site, there's three separate operations competing with the parking on one site. And maybe we should go then to the next one.
Try another picture, Jeremy.
Could we go to the next slide?
Go ahead and the next one.
The problem with the Cotty site is a combination of, we think, too many competing uses on one site. I, I just showed you one of the other restaurant sites and there is a physical separation between the fast food operator and the inline building that has a restaurant in it. On the Cotty site, you have two fast food uses and an inline building that can accommodate restaurant uses, all on one site. The additional aspect of the site that makes that problematic is that you have no access, what I would call normal access, through our internal ring road system. They're not part of our center. Their rights of access are limited to what's shown in gold or yellow on that site plan. Their traffic comes in on the signalized Highway 395 Main Drive, goes east and makes a right turn on our ring road and an immediate right turn into their center. They have one other point of access that is not nearly as accessible, it's on the south side. We don't believe that's going to be their primary point of access. Their primary point of access is going to be on our main drive. And our concern is purely and simply this. At peak hour, they're going to be very successful. This is a busy center, their center is going to be busy. Virtually all of their traffic is going to access that site on our main entry off of Highway 395. So at the same time, you're going to have Cotty Foods patrons coming in the, the drive-off 395, making the right turn and the quick right into this center. You're going to have Cotty Foods patrons leaving that site the same way. You're going to have shopping center patrons coming off Palmdale Road and going up our north-south internal road to the retail center north of the Cotty site. You're going to have traffic going from that north retail center down that internal ring road back to Palmdale. You're going to have Walmart customers coming and going on the same Highway 395 main drive into the center. And the important factor is that there is no stop sign for the east-west traffic off the 395 main drive at the intersection of that main drive in our internal ring road. And that was because there, there's inadequate queuing capability on that main drive. So the, the traffic coming in and out is not going to have a stop, it's going to be free traffic in and out. And what's going to be stopped is the Cotty Foods traffic, the traffic to the north, the traffic from the south. And we believe that that, the dynamics of that, when you couple it with the fact that we think their site is overly dense and underparked and will have cars queuing out into that, into that area. It's going to create a very severely congested situation. And our concern is, we believe we're right. Staff may not believe we're right, I read the staff report, but we believe we're right. We do a lot of centers like this and have lived through these problems in the past. My big concern is that if we are right, we're not going to know until the center's built and there's not going to be any way to solve the problem at that time. We think that the way this is designed, there's going to be a mess and it's not going to be able to be solved once the mess occurs. Our idea was that we should meet with Cotty and we should talk about reorienting the use some. We should talk about less density on that site. We think they have too much square footage on that site to be serviced. And as I said, they were unwilling to meet and discuss that. And so I'm here again, once again, not trying to be obstinate or a bully or to say we don't want them there, we do. But we're a little bit surprised that they've been unwilling to engage in serious discussions with us about it. I think they wanted to talk until I made it clear to them that we thought their site plan needed to be modified. At that point, they decided they didn't want to talk to us anymore. So, that's, that's our position. I'm sorry, it's such a highly technical subject matter. Walmart has many, many stores in the United States, many, many stores in California. We have encountered this problem many, many times. We don't think the layout of this site is going to be conducive to the traffic flows that are going to exist in the center and particularly during the peak hours. And as I said, we're concerned that if the problem is not addressed now, it won't be able to be addressed later. There'll be no, there'll be no solution to it. And what we'll have is conflicts and problems and complaints from the users and the occupants, or the users and the patrons of the various establishments in the center. So, I thank you for your attention. I appreciate you hearing me out. I wish we could have resolved this with Cotty, but we've been unable to do so. My request is that you continue this and that your staff urge Cotty to talk with us before you approve this project. Not our desire to stop the project, but it's not going to do them or us any good if their project is incompatible with the rest of the center. So, thank you very much for your attention and I'm sorry I took so long.
Thank you.
I may speak because we were, you know, directly addressed, if, if I may. I just want to go over a couple of points. Can we go back to that slide up there? You know, when I look at the, at the density that's being discussed with our site and then I look at the northern part of the rest of the shopping center, just north of us. To me, there's, you have four buildings in a slightly larger site area and we have three buildings on ours. So, I don't know if I see such a huge difference in terms of the density of our parcel compared to that area of the project. The second thing is, you know, we did reach out to the developer of the shopping center and specifically discussed that entrance drive at the north. And it was rejected at that time. And, you know, we've been working with staff and we have a site plan that, that utilizes the entrance drives that we have that are constructed today as part of the, the easemented areas. And, you know, we've provided, provided reporting, traffic reporting that proves that the site works, it's not underparked and will have no significant impact to the ring road. I wanted to make that point. And the third thing I wanted to mention, if, in terms of the statement regarding the traffic inflows to our site being from that main entrance drive, I think you have to consider that that's a median street, 395. And as you travel north on 395 and you're looking to go to our parcel, you're going to make that right-hand turn. You're not going to pass our parcel and then go to the main entrance drive to get in. So, that leaves then southbound traffic as being the traffic that would use that main entrance drive to get to our parcel. So, I see it at least as a 50/50 or maybe even more weighted to the northbound traffic coming in from the southern entrance drive as compared to the northern entrance drive, depending on the population. depending on the population, as you might think of Victorville as a whole. Who's coming from the south, who's coming from the north? Yes, that's it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this item? All right, hearing none, I'll go ahead and bring that back to the commission. Close public hearing. A couple of points for clarification in, in, is your voice just, right? Sorry. Just the, on the, the traffic coming in and out, would you feel that it is adequate in regards to the traffic flow?
Our traffic engineer, who's a registered traffic engineer, reviewed the study submitted by Walmart, and also the empirical study on the stacking and the parking demand submitted by Coty Foods. And he went over his review with me, and I reviewed it on a higher level. I didn't get through every single paragraph and number. But we both, we both came to the conclusion that we're not overly concerned about the stacking causing impacts, basically spilling over into the ring road and causing congestion or negative impacts. That was our conclusion. And I think the empirical data that Coty Foods gathered on two of their restaurants, two similar restaurants, was good supplemental information. And I would, I would rely on that, too, as regards just to theoretical information, which, which is normal in a traffic study. And that's what the Walmart study did, is they, they had to rely on, you know, theoretical numbers from the Institute of Transportation engineers. But I think the empirical data was useful to look at, too. And taking that into account, we would recommend approval. So, we're not, we're not overly concerned about the negative impacts, just to distill it into one statement.
Okay. And then, one additional question, both the, I don't know if it would be possible to put an estimate relating to how much usage the north entrance versus the south entrance may potentially get. I understand that on the north, it's a signal coming in, so it would be the south-going traffic would use that entrance, and then the north-going traffic would use the southern entrance into the facility?
And, you know, that's always based on judgment. Even when a traffic engineer does a study, it's what's called trip distribution, and that, that is somewhat based on judgment. You can take counts and maybe try to develop an estimate, but without, you'll know what the number is after the development opens. So, it's always open to some interpretation.
Okay.
And I don't know if I can give a strong opinion about what percentage is going to be on the north versus the south. I, I, it seems like more of the population that would use that would be from the south. The question is, what would the distribution be, you know, through the signal versus the other driveway? Would they be more or less evenly distributed? I can't really say, to be honest. I, but on the other hand, I don't know if I could say that most of it or almost all of it would go through the, the northern driveway either. So, I'm not really giving you a good definitive answer, but it does depend on judgment, applying your judgment.
Thank you.
Well, my comment is, I wish these two entities would have got together and worked this out before they got here, because we have to make a decision strictly on, on what Walmart's saying and what staff is saying. And I have to agree that our, I hope that staff has done their homework and everything, because it can't be changed after it's done. That's my problem. There's things that's been done in the past that I wish we would have changed before it was done. So, I'd like to see these two entities get together and work this out before it comes to us. But we've continued this three, four times now, so I'm ready to act on it. But I wish that would have been worked out before it got here.
Any other comments? Get us some action?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I, I move that we approve an environmental exemption for this project, PLN 1400027, and approval of a site plan to allow for the construction of two fast food restaurants and one multi-tenant retail building.
Second?
We have a first motion by Commissioner Porter and a second by Commissioner Do. I'd like to call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? That project has passed with Commissioner, Vice Chair Kirk absent for the vote.
I'll go ahead and move to agenda item number three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Item number three is DV 15-00001. It is a request by the City of Victorville, the Development Department, for a number of various amendments to Title 16 of the municipal code. As you know, this item's been before the commission on, I believe, two, two previous occasions. The bulk of the item is our recommendation to prohibit a number of what we're termed problematic uses. The current continuance that we're requesting tonight to the June 10th meeting is due to, we've revised some items, we've provided definitions for some of the prohibited uses to clarify what they are and what we're, what we're meaning in the prohibition of them. And then, we've also added a couple of sections. So, we, we need a little bit more time to work out, work on this, and therefore, we're recommending a continuance. However, tonight, we would ask that the commission provide us with any input or any thoughts that you have. You've done that before previously. You said, yes, let's, let's work on cleaning up the city and prohibit these uses, so we moved forward. We did add hydroponic uses to that list before. That was, one, was just a, an idea or a suggestion to look into. We believe that that is linked to marijuana use, and it's, it's one in the same. It seems to, you know, the constant references to 420 and the smoking of pot when you go, when you have a hydroponic use. I mean, what else, you know, what else can it be? So, we did add that to the list. We would also like your input on, for massage establishments and tattoo parlors, it's the establishment of a separation distance. And Alex looked into other cities, and the standard, or what seems to be similar throughout other cities, is 1,000 feet. When I heard that, to me, it sounds way too close. 1,000 feet's here to the courthouse. It's not a big distance. It's not a big separation. So, maybe the planning commission can give us some input on that. We can't prohibit tattoo parlors because apparently it's some kind of freedom of speech that you can put things on your body. So, we can't prohibit them, but we can place restrictions on where we want them and, and in zones and in separation. So, Alex proposed a separation distance requirement. I just don't know that that's strong enough. It's the same with the massage requirements. We can't really prohibit somebody from doing massage because the state says they can, but we can now, they've changed the law back to cities can do things to limit them to how we want, you know, to zones and to separation distances. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you guys, and if you have any thoughts or further input, we'd appreciate it.
Just one that I had in regards to automotive repair heavy. Should you separate out heavy equipment and tractor-trailer, since generally automotive and heavy truck don't go hand-in-hand? It was a former business that I was in, but they're generally separated, the two don't intermingle?
What zone do we have those in right now? I think, for the devil. What zone is heavy? Oh, here it is, right here. Heavy, we proposing conditional in C1, CM, and thanks. And then permitted in the heavy industrial, or industrial zones, M1 and M2. So, I, I guess if the tractor-trailer proposed in a C1, which is neighborhood commercial, you're right, it may not work, it may not work there. So, we, through the conditional use permit, we could deny that use that way. Same in the commercial manufacturing, the CM zone, as a conditional use permit, some of our CM zones might be appropriate for some of that repair. But yeah, some of them, you're absolutely right, wouldn't fit next to office buildings or some other uses, so it's up to you. We can strictly put them in, you're, you're right, we can separate the tractor-trailer out further and only put it in heavy, in the industrial, or we can use the CUP process to...
Yeah, because it's generally, I mean, that's where I see a fit, similar to like, say, down where the Goodyear distribution is, you know, something like that. That's where heavy truck would fit in, but over by Lowe's.
Right, exactly. Yeah, the, I agree, the tractor-trailers don't have the ability to be put on lifts inside a building, and so that, that's the concern that you're raising, so certainly understand that.
Yes?
I'd like to address a few issues. As you know, early in our workshop, I had mentioned I would like to know how many of these particular businesses do we have in, in the City of Victorville? And then, I also asked for information as relates to the public concerns or demand or interest in having these establishments within the City of Victorville proportionate to our population, which is estimated to be at 165,000 citizens. So, in reviewing this, or looking at this document that was presented tonight, we have 17 smoking businesses. And the next largest is Money Loan, in the neighborhood of 15. And then, the next after that is, I'm sorry, the largest one is Massage 18. So, I recognize, as the director indicated, we're not in a position to prohibit, but it is our goal, considering the report and information that we got as relates to violence, crime, criminality, it is a serious concern. So, the restrictions, imposing restrictions somehow should be, one of my goals, is to minimize the criminal element associated with some of these businesses. In some of the instances, articles I read, it even got to the point where there's loss of life, considering shootings, robbing, things of that nature. So, I'm delighted that we have sufficient time, or given time, to adjust this in a very thorough manner. Thank you. I yield back.
My, my feelings to staff are basically the same as the last meeting. On the surface, I, I look at these uses, and I, I realize that they're not the most glamorous, high-end, A-credit-type uses. I also realize that a lot of these type uses are the, are the types of uses that you see in older neighborhoods of other towns, tend to be a little bit more blighted areas. I do realize that, but I'm not, I'm still at this point not prepared to just prohibit across the board with one brush stroke, all of these uses forevermore in the City of Victorville, without more evidence that if we do that, pretty, pretty extreme, what I think is a pretty extreme move, that there better be results from that. I am just not convinced in my mind that never allowing another payday loan, a pawn shop, a, a smoke shop, is going to help substantiate up, you know, Victorville as far as crime and citizens, so...
Would there be a way to get any crime stats relating to any of these, these businesses?
Absolutely. We're working on that for this report when it comes to you in final form.
And if it helps, too, maybe, I know we've seen it in the past with some of the city council stuff, if anyone from the sheriff's department would like to share their stats with us and what they've actually found on the streets with either any or all of these type uses?
He asked if we needed him here tonight. I told him no, that we'd rather have him here for the, the actual moving forward for adoption. They are here to support these. We will be proceeding with some revocations of some, of two smoke shops. You may have heard about the police stings and finding them selling bath salts and spices in their businesses, and that's part of the problem. It just...
I think that's great. That's the way to go.
I also mentioned in the workshop that I should mention, too, is that we were looking for your direction on the paraphernalia, on drug paraphernalia, and whether we should prohibit that. And so, if we could get a vote and a direction on that, we can move forward with that. And that's part of the problem, I believe, is that these smoke shops cannot rely on selling cigarettes alone to pay the rent and to make their profit. Therefore, they look to the drug paraphernalia, the bongs, the pipes, the papers, the whatever you need. They look to that. And then, additionally, we find a number of businesses, or the sheriff, the sheriffs find a number of businesses go beyond that and sell illegal substances, like, you know, above and beyond the, the products in their stores. So, it, it is a touchy situation. I understand Rob's point, but I, I think it is a big part of what I think we're catering to these people with, to the people who use these businesses. It makes it easy for the type of people in the city that we don't want here to live here when everything they need is here. And I think that's part of staff's and, and this, city council's, the strategic planning session and the goals of cleaning up the city, I think that these are headed in that direction.
Answering your question on the paraphernalia, I personally am in agreement with...
So am I.
Okay. So, I guess we could look at, see what maybe some other ordinances from other cities, maybe we get that emailed out prior to our next meeting?
Sure.
For what, how they address paraphernalia?
Absolutely.
About the area, the thousand feet away, do you have any idea what, what would be appropriate? You know, several miles?
Now, my immediate thought was a mile, but...
A mile?
You know, if you think the intersections, the city is split into a grid system, you know, where you have, you know, from the freeway to, what would it be, between, or between Balsam and what's next, Cottonwood is a mile, you know, it's, you know, the main streets are miles, are a mile apart. Even that, you're right, even that might be too close. It might result in too many. We can, I guess we could come back with a little bit, if we could get direction that, yes, you agree a thousand feet's not enough, and let's increase it. If that's the majority of you say that, we can come back with some...
Would that would be, would that be for each one of these items, or specifically for smoke shops, or...
Mainly the ones we're going to regulate, and the, the tattoo parlors, the massage...
Because, okay, my concern in regards to massages, I get where we're going, but you get in areas, say, up by the hospital, where you would have a therapeutic massage, it may be in relation to somebody's physical therapy, and you may have two to three different locations within a two-to-three block period. Now, how would you regulate?
I don't, if that wasn't, if it was in accessory to a therapy place, that's totally separate. This is, would be referring strictly to somebody, just a massage business.
Handalone?
Yes.
I also think on, on, you know, looking at these, these uses problematic that were suggested on more of a macro level, you know, talking to some other citizens about this and kind of, kind of polling some people I know about, you know, what, what do you think here in Victorville? What do you think about these uses? What, what's the cause and the effect? What do you think about these uses? What, what's the cause and the effect? A couple of people kind of got to the, the realization that, that I was as well, that. You know, if you take away some of these uses, say a pawn shop or something like that, is that gonna help stop the crime? People are living here because it's cheap to live here and if they go rob from a house and go pawn it, that's what they do. They'll do it here, they'll do it in Hispania, they'll do it in San Bernardino, they'll take it to wherever they have to. Have we had any thoughts about a collective high desert? Field where all the cities would come together because, you know, if we, like, looking at the map you guys provided, it helps a lot. And, um, okay, we eliminate all that stuff in the future, let's say the perfect world, everything goes away, it's all nice, perfect A credit tenants, national tenants. And they all just hop across the street on Bear Valley Road, so that'll just drive them, they're all right there in our community. Still, those people that live in Victorville will live in Victorville, they're not gonna move out because.
That's exactly what Commissioner Huber brought up at the last meeting was, uh, what are the neighboring cities doing? And I didn't get a chance to, uh, do that before this, before tonight, but I do plan to do that before the next meeting is reach out to the neighboring cities and ask them, can they start looking into it, would they be interested in it? Where are their, where are their commissions and councils at on doing just that?
I think that would be, um, you know, more beneficial and it might do more, it might do go more good if everyone's on the same page. And should we decide that we work on a few of these type uses, if it's across the board, that actually kind of makes a dent. The people that live up here have less of it in general.
Agree. I'd like to comment on that, Mister Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Okay, I, I, uh, have the highest regard for the other municipalities within the Victor Valley and, uh, that's a fact. But when it specifically concerns, uh, safety of the city of Victorville, uh, that is my ultimate concern, the city of Victorville. How safe our citizens are. I, I have little control or say-so as relates to Apple Valley or Hispania or Lanto or, uh, any other municipality. Uh, so I, um, I welcome a collective effort, but nevertheless, for me, it's all about the safety of the city of Victorville.
So do we need to open this up to a public hearing and then do the continuance or is just for our discussion?
If we could just get a, like, was there consensus on raising the thousand feet?
My concern, when you say a thousand feet, just generally a thousand feet, I don't want, um, my guess, my question would be, what are the restrictions as to where these places can exist? If you just tell me it's within the business, um, where the businesses are. I don't wanna see a pawn shop next to, um. Ralphs or State of Brothers or, I, I don't wanna see that. Uh, so I think it's more than just a thousand feet, I think we just have to look at where they can be and where they should not be.
Okay, well, the bulk of them are pro, for prohibition, if we get to that point. If the commission, the majority of the commission votes on that, most of them would be outright prohibited and no new ones could come in. The tattoo parlors and the massage establishments, strictly a massage establishment, those are the ones that were propos, proposing further regulations and the, and the separation distance. So those would be C two, uh, where, you know, typically all of Bear Valley Road that's in our city is C two. Just about, I think almost ninety, ninety-nine percent of it. Palm Dale Road used to be all in Seventh Street, C two, uh, till you get to Old Town. Palm Dale Road was, the majority of it was C two until we changed some of it to C one. So those are the kind of, that's, those are the kind of strip commercial areas that we have where we're talking about. They could be all in a row or no distance. But we can, we can come back with different, different options and we can show you what a thousand feet is represented on a map and what further distances would be as well, we can do that.
I think that might be good visually, yeah.
So yes, and we're just looking for a continuance to the June tenth meeting. There's no one here to speak on it.
More discussion? All right, I'll go ahead and propose a continuance to our June tenth planning commission meeting.
Anybody opposed to continuing the item? Then it will be continued to June tenth.
All right. All right, in compliance with the Brown Act, it is necessary for the planning commission to make available time for members of the public to address the planning commission on items of interest that fall within the planning commission's subject matter jurisdiction. Please limit the length of your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to the planning commission? And I'll go ahead and close it, move to agenda, item number four.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, item number four is a continued discussion from last meeting on April eighth. We opened up the discussion for a window signage and whether the planning commission wanted to look at our current regulations and modify them. The discussion went well last time, or a lot of issues came up and, um, this time I think we're looking to delineate whether we want them, want to stay with temporary signage or whether to allow it as permanent and what percentages, uh, we're at, so with that, I'll just turn it over to you guys and.
Well, I read through all this, um, in my opinion, I believe we should allow some permanent signage. There are some businesses and or buildings that I think would benefit based upon heights and usage. Um, but also limiting the percentage to probably no more than thirty percent of total window. Facing or putting, I don't know, in the square footage, thirty percent of the overall window square footage. And just as I drove around, what I noticed was that there are some. Say maybe thirty foot high buildings that have signage along the top, then you may have double rows of windows, but yet the business is lower, located in the lower corner. And when you're driving by and you glance at the building, you may see a sign on the window, but you're not gonna be looking up to see what's along the top. Some of the industrial areas I've noticed are, are like that, um, silica, jasmine and those particular areas. That's where I noticed it quite a bit. So I think business-wise, it would be beneficial to allow for some type of permanent signage. I don't know if that should come before the zoning administrator or if it can be done at the desk, at least with an idea of, hey, this is what we're planning to do. Because you do have to have some type of, uh, schematic or, or, uh, a proof prior to having any vinyl cut or any of those types of things, so that may be something that we may wanna have maybe a zoning administrator just sign off on saying, yeah, that's okay, and have that as part of your business license or your business application. You know, if we're gonna have signage, you have to have it approved and signed off on, and it just becomes part of the package.
That, that would be for permanent. And, and then we would limit the, the amount to a percentage.
I was thinking no more than thirty percent of the overall window square footage. But that can be, I mean, that, that was just my thought, if you guys think less than.
Of each window?
No, of the overall. If you had, if you had four windows, you can only have thirty percent total of the four windows combined.
Well, that would still give visibility and that's.
Or twenty or twenty-five percent, whichever you guys feel is appropriate. And then I don't know if there would be any consideration for signage that you can see out from the inside, you can see out. But then the outside, you know, it looks like one solid pane, but when you're from the inside, you can see out of those windows, kind of like they do for the, um, car windows. I've seen this where they're, they'll wrap a window, but yet when you're inside, you can see out. But I don't know if there would be a consideration for something along that instead of blacking out an entire window, which would be like, um, liquor store advertisements when they put, you know, they basically cover a whole window with one sheet of vinyl on the inside, but yet you can't see inside or you can't see out cuz the windows are all covered.
How much signage did you say was?
Well, they've got twenty to twenty-five percent and I was thinking no more than thirty percent. But we can, that's open for discussion.
That's, um, I kinda, since our last meeting, I kinda made some notes here, so I'm just gonna kind of read quick my, my thoughts, which are similar to what, what, uh, Chairman Wilson just said is, um. I've always thought that windows are a very important of architecture, an important part of a building's architecture. It can look distracting and visually unpleasing if too much info is packed across all the windows and door areas. However, I do understand the importance of business marketing and want local business to be successful, of course. I would be in favor of permanent signage at right around maybe a twenty-five percent area of total, um, total window area and doors. I believe that gives enough room to advertise appropriately certain products, services or sales that a business might have. Also, this might be a little bit closer in line with what some of the shopping center sign criteria is, say, because when a shopping center owner says you can only put so much signage on the windows cuz I don't want my shopping center to look junky, the tenant's under the impression that, well, we're gonna put some signs on our windows. And then if, if it's technically not allowed at all in our municipal court and ordinances, then there's a conflict. So this gives it a, um, you know, gives them something to work with, something that has teeth, um, to be able to come back if somebody's abusing it and say, hey, you look really, really bad, our ordinance is twenty-five percent, you know, tone it down for the problem ones. And then on those, um, those full window murals like we see on the screen right in front of us now, um, I was kind of thinking that's, that's a little bit different than just the, the window signs where they put a poster up, they put window paintings up, you know, hang little signs and stuff. Those large, um, full window vinyl murals, maybe those are something that can, um, be at administrative approval and be looked at by staff, similar to the standards, um, of other architectural designs on a building. Where it is subjective, there are some guidelines, but really it should be a judgment call to say, hey, you have the opportunity to do this, but it can't be something completely wild and awful, it does have to, um, be professional in design, not in conflict with the building or other neighboring areas. And usually digitally, products of this size on the full windows, they're usually digitally, um, prepared, imprinted and, and can be sent electronically for approval, just kind of almost like in a, an architectural, um, elevation. From those sign companies, cuz those are actually pretty expensive to do.
I was worried, we didn't hear from Larry.
Please Commissioner, do it.
I was passing the buck. Anyway, um, I'm not an expert regarding signs, but I, I did think of some, some things. So they consist of questions, what is the need to have a, of the window, uh, completely filled with advertising? What is the need for that? I don't understand the need for that. Why the entire window? And, um. When we determine that something's gonna be temporary or permanent, what falls in the category of being permanent versus temporary? Because again, I know very little about signs. So that's question number two.
In reality, how can we track everybody to say, oh, my sign was temporary, it was here thirty days and I haven't had one since the last four months before that? It's almost too hard, too micro to try to track all that. If we're gonna allow, if, if the commission does decide to allow a certain percentage of a window, you know, to be permanent, then why even worry about tracking temporary when we can get grand opening banner permits and stuff currently?
I'm looking, I'm looking, I'm looking at people, well, I'm concerned about their competition. The competition says, and let's say someone is bringing in a million dollars and someone is only bringing in twenty thousand a year. And they're in the same business and the one that has a million dollars, he has a permanent sign and he can fill up the entire window. Is the small business owner, is he, is that person at a disadvantage? I would think so. They, I think it would be very difficult for them to compete and yet they're entitled to have a business. So I, uh, my thinking is that, like I asked the question, what is the need to have? What is something what I'm looking at now? Why is it, why should it be the entire window? I don't know. So maybe, because I don't know anything about signs, maybe can say, uh, you must have at least a clearance of two to four inches at the bottom, top, side, I don't know, but. Don't think there's, uh, a need to have the entire window utilized.
And I think that's what we're discussing in regards to, if we were allowing permanent signs, some of what we have here, then limiting it to a percentage of the overall window square footage so that it doesn't, so that everybody is consistent, so that would be.
So if you took the twenty-five percent and you looked at the sign on the screen with four sets, you'd be able to cover up a top and a bottom and that would be twenty-five percent.
Are, on this particular one, however, is it, um, can you see through it?
Well, it says it's perforated, so I'm assuming from the inside you can see out.
The problem exists is when somebody rents a building, he don't, he rents a building per square foot. He don't really realize how much glass he has when he rents it unless you takes a look at it. What can I do with this storefront to make it look like I want it to? Now, some of this stuff is very obvious, the Raven Donuts and Ice Cream, I mean, that is absolutely ridiculous. I mean, that, we should start with the, the most logical things that you don't want. Uh, this other one, of course, I like the color better than the black and white you made last time, so I kept from last week. And then you get to the Autozone and is that all bad? Maybe it is, it's more than twenty percent, we, we determined two weeks ago. Um, and then there's this Stein which you can't hardly see from the, the road at all. So I think we gotta start with something, when you go back to that one with the Merle on it. I, I don't think that is totally out of line. He, uh, he's not advertising his business totally. It, it looks like a Merle on my building if, if you kind of look at it that way. But again, he's got space there to, and he's utilizing it, uh, and I guess it is for advertising naturally, cuz he's got a phone number there. So we have to start with a, a percentage, like I, I think you said, and use a percentage and try to make it somewhat realistic. So staff don't have to keep running out every day and tear down signs or give, give citations to sign people. But, but you know that, you know, you're gonna give a sign, you're gonna give a, a citation to that building and to that building and many, many more in town right now. There's a stereo place that's just as bad as these are right now also, that's got more signage and you can even read. So I, I like to start with something like what you're saying, twenty, twenty-five, uh, permanent, I don't know what you wanna do with temporary. That's another really hard to control. How you gonna control it?
And then I, kind of along those same lines is something along, say like, uh, Hunter Chiropractic or the, the Stein Chiropractic, having the signage that they have. When you look at it, it doesn't look horrible, granted, it's advertising a business, advertising the different things that they do. And saying a difference between this type of sign versus the, the donut shop signs or the liquor store signs. Where do you draw the line, or where do we draw the line at what is acceptable or not? And maybe it is a situation where you would have a, the business come in and petition to have more square footage of window covering if we set a, a maximum, but maybe there's the ability for them to petition to get something larger. I don't know, I don't know if that's feasible or if that's unrealistic. I'm gonna have to go out and order signs.
You know, Autozone builds their building per their standard, so they, they know every store has X amount of square footage of glass. So it'd be easier to say, okay, I, I, and again, I didn't calculate that out, but that's probably, I think you said, be more like forty percent or thirty-five percent. I, I see nothing wrong with the Autozone with somewhat signage. And I didn't look tonight if that was temporary or if that was still on there tonight. I didn't look today. I will when I go home tonight, but, you know, I think there's, we should have a starting point.
Okay.
And or. Again, some of this stuff looks nice and I don't have a problem with it, some of it looks just absolutely horrible and I have a problem with it.
Agreed.
So we all probably have a different opinion. So we all probably have a different opinion on what looks nice. What I like, you probably don't like.
I think we're in agreement though, that maybe a twenty-five to thirty percent or whatever is a range that would be acceptable because that eliminates then those extreme ones. There's a couple pack, pictures in our package and we can all name other ones around town that are just extreme.
I would agree with that.
Actually, with all of the, the, uh, uh, when they try to cover it up like they do with, you know, the whole window, you don't even see it. You know, as a customer, you don't even see it. Uh, some of this was, looked pretty nice, that, uh, even the perforated one I thought was very nice too.
Okay.
But that would, that would cover more than that.
Well, I think we have an agreement in regards to allowing permanent, I think we just need to just...
It sounds like there's a, that's where we'll head, is permanent twenty, around the twenty-five percent range, and we'll come back and, and there you can, it's not like you can't have more discussion when we go with an ordinance, it's just, it'll w- we'll be refining at that point.
Okay.
But I, I think it's good, good.
Cool, all right. Need more discussion on this one? All right, so go ahead and, uh, move to agenda item number five. It's the, uh, revision of the final draft of the Victor Elementary School District's April two thousand fifteen school facilities needs analysis, and it's for, it's, uh, communication. Any discussion on this? All right, and then, uh, I'll go ahead and move to presentations of reports by commission members. Reporter? Commissioner Kirk? Commissioner Huber?
Nothing.
Uh, Commissioner Do?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, um, I appreciate this opportunity to provide commentary. As I had stated earlier, I think, um, safety is very important. I think we all share that view. In fact, I don't think, I know we share that view. Uh, secondly, when it comes to businesses, I know that it's important to have a level, playing field for every business, corporations, small businesses and those who are, are in the middle. So, I'm, um, delighted that we've, uh, made significant progress today. Thank you. I yield back.
And I'm just glad Bear Valley Road's being worked on. I'm looking forward to that being done. All right, uh, I will go ahead and, uh, continue this meeting to our June tenth, two thousand fifteen meeting.